Well, it's just turned 7:30, okay. I'd like to call our city council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the pledge of allegiance. Felke. Belzak.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Marques.
Here.
Maciver. Shower.
Here.
Seifert.
Here.
Five present, two absent. We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on any items. It doesn't have to be items that are on the agenda this evening, but if you would like to ask questions of the city council at this point, please come up to the microphone. And let's move on to the approval of the minutes of October 21st. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any additions or deletions to the minutes? The role, please. Seifert.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent. The minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share with the council? I will share just one. I received a letter from the Darien Historical Society outlining their needs, their priorities, and their critical needs that they have, and because I've received this letter, I am going to call a meeting of the Darien Initiatives Committee in early December, and I invite all of the council members to attend that meeting. It's going to be, besides talking about, with the initiatives group, we're going to talk about the town hall meeting and how we can improve that for next year, but also we'll add this issue to the agenda so that we can do some brainstorming on ways to help the historical society with their needs. Let's move on then if there are no other communications. The mayor's report, I have none this evening. Let's move on to the city clerk's report.
I have none also this evening.
Okay. City administrators' report.
Thank you, Mayor Weaver. Just one item, a reminder that the goal-setting session for the city council is scheduled for Wednesday, November 13th at 6:30 in the police department training room, and the agenda and backup material for that meeting is on our website.
Thank you. Department head information and questions?
Madam Mayor, I have one item for you this evening. In respect to Bailey Road and Plainfield Road, if you recall, there was a grant that we were awarded approximately three, four months ago. During that grant, the grant was in the amount of $873,000. Of that $873,000, we held a kickoff meeting with the Illinois Department of Transportation to see what types of protocols would be required for this project, as well as the funding mechanisms, and so on. Part of the discussion with IDA at that time was whether or not a traffic signal was warranted at Plainfield Road and Bailey. As of a week ago, DuPage County finally completed their study, and the intersection does warrant a traffic signal. Since the project does warrant a traffic signal, we now have the opportunity to go back to the county and ask them for a letter of intent. That letter of intent basically requests the county to commit to the funding with the city of Darien. So again, the total allocation or total grant is $873,000. Of that, we're not sure of what our responsibility will be at this point yet, because the way the grant, or the way the county works is the county will participate in their fair share. In other words, whatever is on the county roadway, the legs, as they refer to it as, they will pick up that expense. The traffic signal itself is at a 50/50 cost share. Obviously, this will be all done through IGAs if and when the city council approves the grants monies, or that we would be responsible for a certain portion of it. Now, the one main thing is after we get this letter of intent back from the county with the cost sharing, we decide, we will be bringing it back to the committees as well as the city council for budget goal session. But in respect to that, the city of Darien will have to lay out the first $80,000, which is referred to as Phase One Engineering. There is no reimbursements for that. What their Phase One Engineering does, it basically gives us the shape and the ingredients that would be required for this project to move forth. Once those costs are all gathered, we then would go back and determine what is the county's share and what is the city's share, and from there on, an IGA would be developed, as well as the additional expenditures that would be required for the project.
Dan, is there a time limit on the grant?
There is a time limit. The timeline to begin construction is next year. I believe it's by November or October.
And if you don't use it, you lose it.
Correct.
Any other questions for Dan on this?
The, I'm sorry. Dan, maybe you could also mention, we did, you know, the question we had back and forth is, you know, why would the city pay anything for this project, being the fact that it's on the county roadway? And basically, the response from the county was that this project's not identified in any of their capital projects lists, and even the fact that it has the traffic counts now, it's not something that the county would move forward on their own, is what they're telling us at this point.
That is correct. And this project, I believe, has been going on for the last, well, the concept of the project has been going on for at least six, seven years. So finally, a grant was able to come through, and again, was our exposure going to be with the $80,000, a total of $200,000, $250,000? That's the unknown at this point. We'll have a better idea once the county.
Okay. Tell me again the amount of the grant? Did you say $873,000?
Correct.
Why can't all of those dollars be used for this project and nobody else pay for it?
Well, they could, but the project, the way the grant works is of $873,000, it's 80/20. So that 80/20, the city would be, in this case, since the city is the applicant, we are responsible for 20% of that. Of that 20%, since that portion of Plainfield Road is the county's, the county, through this letter of intent, would pick up what's referred to as the fair share. So if, let's say, 90% of this 20% is actually the county's, they would be picking up the majority of the funding for this project.
So this grant is basically, it's an 80/20. It's not, here's a million dollars, you know, and you can use it. It is an 80/20 match if the city accepts the grant.
Right now, at this point, what staff will be doing is going back to DuPage County and requesting through this letter of intent, and they're going to go through the county board to make sure they can set funds on the side for this proposed project. Because if the county doesn't participate, we would bring it back to the city council, and it'd be the city council's decision on whether or not we would want to take on the entire cost or no cost at all. In other words, project or no project.
Can it actually move forward if the county doesn't share?
Correct.
It's a policy decision among our city council. If the county decides not to share, the county would give us permission to do it, but we would have to fund all of it. Right, Dan?
Correct.
And whether...
My question is if they choose not to, okay. I guess you just answered that, okay. Alderman Marques.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is, this concept has been something that, back in April, when I was out there meeting with residents, the people in Bailey Park are really, really promoting this. They have significant concerns about turning left-hand turns, right-hand turns on, off of Bailey on to Plainfield Road, and the, and Chief, I've never asked you to do this, but they mentioned there's a lot of accident, a lot of property damage, a lot of rear-end collisions on, actually...
I don't think we, I don't think we have the statistics to prove that, to be honest with you.
I think the, what the chief did.
I think we've done that before.
As I recall, we had done some accident review at that location, and the accidents had more to do with the traffic on Plainfield, but not the traffic, correct, but not the traffic exiting from Bailey, as I recall.
Yes, so...
A lot of those residents, what they'll do when they leave Bailey Park, though, they'll actually go to Lakeview, and they'll drive through down Lakeview.
To get to the light.
To get to the light over by...
Sawmill Creek.
Sawmill Creek.
Yeah, yeah.
So then, I have a question then. So is the traffic lights the only solution to that? Because I've seen some, you know, municipalities where they have a calming mechanism where it's a, it's a, you know, it's a turn, it's a right turn in, you know, going down Bailey, you know, going south, and then, you know, right turn, you know, right turn out, and it's the only, the only, it's only ways going in and out of there, if, as long as those people have ways of getting in and out of there, if that'd be a more economical way of doing that.
One of the issues, one of the issues that people have is that if you have an SUV pull up next to, if you're in the lane by the curb, and you want to make a right-hand turn, and you're watching from westbound traffic or eastbound traffic, if you have an SUV in this lane over here that wants to make a left-hand turn going west on Plainfield Road, they block your line of vision. You can't see.
Right.
So their concern is if you had a light there, at least what that light would do, would regulate those left-hand turns and right-hand turns without jeopardizing people pulling out with cars coming. That's their concern.
But originally, before we had the counts taken, the option was actually some lane reconfigurations, which is exactly what, it was another option. It wasn't a signal.
Right.
But it was maybe a left-turn lane or something different, and, you know, that was the first scenario to look at. So if the traffic counts didn't warrant a light, we, there would really only be one option that the engineers preliminarily have come up with.
Which is like one of those little triangle things that they put in the center of the intersection, where it's, it's a turn, it's a turn in and a turn out of Bailey, and that's all, that's all you got.
Well, this was actually a left-turn lane, if I'm not mistaken, left-turn lane, Dan, from...
Correct.
Plainfield Road, so you would have traffic slowing down there, and it'd be a designated left-turn lane, but it wasn't anything like you're talking about, the triangle, but...
The majority of the accidents were for westbounds, westbound Plainfield Road onto southbound Bailey. They were basically rearenders, and that's where the justification or the warrant analysis for the traffic signal basically came into play.
And the county is the one that did this traffic study?
Correct. We had to wait for the county because we were not going to take on any costs, and the county had agreed that they would take on the warrant analysis, in which they did.
This is really a surprise for me, because they've done, we've asked them to do these studies, traffic surveys before.
We have.
And this is the first time I've heard that the intersection does warrant.
That is correct.
A traffic light. Alderman Shower?
I literally will drive this intersection, or drive this street, three times probably in a day, and it's always the same thing that goes on here. When you're driving up Bailey, you're going north, and you want to turn left, you want to turn right, you're actually going up, and if you want to stop at that stop sign, you have the fence to the apartment buildings here, and then you have trees to the right. There is absolutely no way that you can see traffic coming from either direction without going past a stop sign. And Joe's absolutely right. You'll have a car on one side that you've got to inch out forward, and it goes back and forth. I'll be sitting there for sometimes a minute, minute and a half, waiting for cars to come pass by, and then I get to the point where I'm just like, you know what? I gun it sometimes to try to get out there. And if I'm doing it, everybody else is probably doing it at least maybe once a month or whatever. The point is, it definitely warrants it. And if you take a look, and we talk about the people that live on Bailey Road, whether it's Farmingdale South, Smart Oaks Glen, if it's, you know, Bailey Park, every one of them would probably say this place needs warrants a light, and the support for it would probably be outstanding. One of the things that I really wanted to get done when I was a homeowners association president was talking about getting a light on Bailey, and everybody agreed to it. And that's when this discussion brought, came up, it was probably seven years ago. In this situation, it was the same thing, was basically the county was saying, hey, we're going to split 50/50. You guys got to, you know, get in, we'll get in. Back then, it was a million-dollar light, and it was going to cost us $500,000. Now we got a situation where we got an $830,000 grant, or how much the money is, and now we're looking at the fact where even if we get it, okay, the money that we're putting out is going to be less than where we're at. It's something we need to heavily discuss, and I would highly recommend it, because it is just an absolute light that is warranted in that intersection. I don't even go more into that, but that's what I feel.
Alderman Seifert?
I just want to make sure I understand, Dan. Was that 80/20? The county's 80, but they pick up a fair share of the 20 because it is a county road?
The federal. It's a federal, the federal, it's a federal grant.
They pick up 80?
They pick up 80.
County picks up the fair share of the 20?
Correct.
So it could be really de minimis, really.
And in the grand scheme of things, if you look at the jurisdiction and the legs of who the responsibility lies to, the answer is yes. I know that the 50, there is a 50/50 regardless for the traffic signal. The 50/50 obviously becomes less, while it's 50/50 between the city and the county, obviously the county's picking up a portion of it too. Now, this $873,000 was, is probably from a study that's about a year and a half, maybe two years old at this point, while some costs have increased, and I have to say that this potential monies could be close to worth a million dollars. STP funds, that's what, that's the type of fund that this would be coming from, based on a grant. STP funds are generally known to have a 20% escalator in there. So it still would be covered by the grant. It's just a matter of getting the Phase One Engineering done, and again, the Phase One Engineering done would not be completed until the county came forth and said, yes, we're willing to share, in which case then we'd be bringing it up to either the goal setting or for budgets, earlier than budget by January.
Or no. I mean, if the county says yes or no, that's really what we're waiting for.
Correct.
We're hoping that they're going to, they would contribute.
Right.
So on a million-dollar project, it's likely that the feds would pick up $800,000. We would have that $200,000, and ultimately decide, again, what the fair share is, Dan. I'm still not sure on what, that doesn't mean 50/50%
Correct.
Of the $200,000 either.
Right. It might be 70/20. Our improvements would be more subject to Bailey Road, the traffic signal. Everything else would be dedicated to the county. We might have right-of-way acquisition as well, you know, and/or infrastructure removals such as the water main or the fire hydrants, for example.
One thing they do do, Dan, is they pick up the maintenance end, once it's constructed.
In this particular case, what happened is they, DuPage County would be responsible for the maintenance of the traffic signals. We, the city, would be responsible for the energy costs. Those energy costs would also be, they would be de minimis because of the LED technology that's out there today.
Alderman Shower?
You said the $873,000 will go, basically go stale next year, correct?
I believe the deadline is November 14th, yes.
If it's November 14th, let's just say we don't do this, okay? Can we rebid out for it? And if we can, what's the guarantees? There's no guarantees this will ever come back across us again, correct?
You mean, reapply for a grant?
Correct.
Yeah, we could always reapply for a grant if we let the monies go, whether or not it would compete in another category. It's hard to, it's difficult to say.
Got you.
When did you apply for the grant?
I believe this grant probably over a year ago. At first, they can't, DuPage mayors came, DuPage mayors and managers came back, they're the awarding body on this.
Mm-hmm.
They basically told us that we were not eligible due to some additional points that were, that the committee had reviewed. We then became eligible.
Why?
I'm not sure the exact protocols that they used and/or the point systems that they had discussed internally with the committees, but we were awarded two letters. One was, the first one was that we were not being awarded it, then I believe several months later that we did get notification, that we did receive it.
Okay.
And Dan, just so I'm clear, maybe I misunderstood. The actual traffic light portion of that, is that something that would be ours? The purchase of the traffic lights?
That would be 50/50.
That would be 50/50. Okay, I misunderstood earlier then.
Again, when I say 50/50, 50/50 between us and the county.
Correct, yes.
Then again, the feds would be picking up a portion of that as well.
And I think upon first notification of the grant, I don't think we knew the traffic lights were an option, and when we first got notice, we thought maybe it would just be road configurations. It wasn't until the traffic counts came back, if I'm not mistaken, Dan, right?
Correct.
Originally, we thought it was the reconfiguration. So again, just in summary, we wanted to at least mention this tonight, so when Dan sends this letter to the county, you had a little background, and we wanted to make sure that, again, the council was aware that it doesn't obligate us for any funding. We're just trying to get there, see how much the county will fund.
Okay. Anything else for, any other department head reports? Any other questions for Scott or the chief?
No report for me.
Okay. Let's move on to the treasurer's report, and who has the honor?
I will do that, as soon as I...
Thank you, Mayor Weaver. I am asking for city council approval of warrant number 13-14-12, and the total amount to be approved by the city council of $676,587.33.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Shower. Discussion. The role, please. Marques.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent. The warrant has been approved. The next item is standing committee reports. Do any of the chairman have reports? Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The municipal services committee has its next meeting on November 25th, 2013, here in the city council chambers at 6:30.
Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The minutes of the October 7th, 2013 admin finance meeting have been submitted to the city clerk, and our next admin finance meeting will be Monday, December 2nd at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room.
Thank you. And police committee is not here, okay. Let's move on to questions, comments, agenda-related by the aldermen. Do any of the aldermen have questions? We did go over a number of questions during our work session, so I think those have been answered. Does anyone in the audience want to speak to any of the items that are on the agenda this evening? Let's move on to old business, and there being no old business, I'll review all of the items on the consent agenda for the viewing public. Item A is a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the city of Darien, which includes printers, cameras, answering machine, computers, laptop, transcriber, videocassette recorder, bikes, and miscellaneous items. Item B is a motion to approve an ordinance approving a special use to the Darien zoning ordinance for an eating establishment known as Stella's in the marketplace at Darien at 2415 Seventy-Fifth Street. Item C is a motion, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 3-3-7-11 Class K licenses of the Darien City Code to increase the number of Class K liquor licenses from four to five. Item D is a motion to approve an ordinance amending the city code of the city of Darien Title 6B, which is Chapter 1 Stormwater and Flood Plane Management. Item E is a motion to approve an ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply by the installation or use of potable water supply wells, or by any other method within a certain area in the city of Darien. Amending, this is amending Title 6C Water Division by repealing Chapter 5 and adding new Chapter 5, which are regulations of potable water supplies in a designated area of the city of Darien. That designated area is the area around Plainfield and Cass Avenue, where the BP Amoco was located. Item F is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from All-Star Maintenance Incorporated to provide snow plowing and de-icing services for the parking lot and walkways at Darien Heritage Center, and the sidewalk plowing and de-icing services at our municipal complex, at the proposed schedule of prices through April 30th, 2014. Item G has been removed this evening and moved to Item B of new business, and with that, do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belzak. The role, please. Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent. The consent agenda has been approved. Let's move to new business, and we, the first motion is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city administrator to purchase a Conica 654 copier from Illinois Paper in an amount not to exceed $11,750. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Marques. Discussion. The role, please. Shower.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent. This, the item has been approved. Item B is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Christopher Burke Engineering in an amount not to exceed $20,500 for the surveying and engineering redesign of the open ditch and stormwater conveyance system for Iris Road. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, excuse me, Alderman Seifert, and I'll, seconded by Alderman Shower. This is the first step in trying to address the issues of flooding along Iris Road in the Marion Hills subdivision. Discussion.
We talked about this during the minutes of trade financing today, and there's, you know, all the reasons to be, are there, these residents have to have something, you know, to get fixed. So that's, to me, was a no-brainer.
Yeah, the, the, the discussion was about the fact that this was not a budgeted item in our original 2013-14 budget, but because of the great pricing and all of the work we did on all the ditch programs this year, there is additional funds in that capital, it's Capital Project Fund, right?
Correct.
Yeah. And, and so we'll be able to tap into that fund for these $20,500 for a very important The role, please. Seifert.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent. The item has been approved. Let's move on to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. I personally want to thank the Lions Club for the Halloween party over at Sportsplex. That was my first time there, and I enjoyed all of the things with my granddaughters and the ice skating, too. That was fun. Thank you to the Darien Lions Club. Any other announcements from the council? Alderman Seifert?
Yes, the Hinsdale South, what do they call themselves? Officer, Sergeant James Worsili is being inducted into Hinsdale South Hall of Fame November 22nd at 10 o'clock at the high school. As everybody remembers, he lost his life from cancer. It was February 2012, and Hinsdale South is inducting him to the Hall of Fame on November 21st.
Let's open up the floor, the opportunity to ask questions, comments, or make any announcements of a general nature from the audience. One item I think I would be remiss if I didn't mention, one of the items on the consent agenda was a new eating establishment called Stella's, which is going to be in Marketplace of Darien. This is one of those facilities that has, is, is, is an eating establishment, but it also has video gaming machines, too. And all of our businesses in Darien who plan on applying for these video gamings are waiting for the city council of the city of Darien to make a decision whether we're going to allow this to happen in the city of Darien. So we are going to be discussing that at our November 13th goal-setting meeting, and I'm sure all these businesses will be anxious to find out what we decide at that meeting. So anyone who's interested in these issues, I know that we've received emails, an email from a resident who tells us that other residents think we're trying to put something through without, without informing the residents and being open about it, and nothing could be farther from the truth on that. So let's make sure everyone knows that this is, the issue of video gaming is going to be an issue we discuss at our November 13th goal-setting session. Do you want to come up to the microphone, please? Yes, please identify yourself.
Gary Leff.
What was that?
Gary Leff, from Stella's Place slash Laredo Hospitality. I was wondering at that meeting if we would have an opportunity to present just our perspective on video gaming, if we'd like to.
I don't believe we're looking, we've already had that presentation, so I don't I don't believe we were looking, we've already had that presentation, so I don't believe that's where we're looking, unless anybody in the council feels that they need another reminder of what the, what this is all about.
Right, okay, that's fine. But we're welcome to attend and.
Yeah, you were here with Bob Taft, if I remember correctly. Yeah. So we, we had that lesson there.
Oh, actually, no, I'm sorry. Maybe.
Was it Bob Taft?
No.
No. Was that a?